Good evening and welcome to the October 6, 2025 meeting of the zoning Board of Appeals for ZBA. First, let me introduce the members of the ZBA present here this evening, myself Chairman Alan Donnelly, our secretary, going to be Vice Chairman tonight, Mr. Elijah Hewling, regular member Commissioner Mr. Richard Briggs, who's going to be our secretary this evening. Let's see, we have alternate member Commissioner Mr. Michael Barnes is with us, alternate member Commissioner Mr. Liam Anea is with us, and alternate member Commissioner Mr. Douglas Clemens is with us. We also have our zoning, excellent zoning enforcement officer, Mr. Fran Lawley with us this evening. Absent this evening is the Vice Chairman, Mr. Carl Hinger, and regular member Commissioner, Mr. Larry Rushmeyer, and our recording secretary, Ms. Cassandra Barryam.
She ain't here?
No, she's not here. Oh, I said absent.
Oh, you don't?
Yeah. The current agenda can be found here at the table or on the town website on the board meetings. When we begin the public hearing, I will call each applicant one at a time. When I call the property address, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and tell us about your appeal in detail. After, the secretary will read into the record any communications we received in favor or opposed to the application. The Chair will then entertain questions of clarification from board members concerning the application. We will then hear from those who wish to speak in favor of the application, followed by those who are opposed. Following each side of the question, the applicant will be allowed to make concluding remarks. After we have gone through all the cases on the agenda tonight, we will close the public portion of the meeting and will deliberate an open executive session. You must have at least four affirmative votes to have your appeal granted. The final decision may be in the form of approved as submitted, approved with stipulations, or disapproved. All questions and comments must be directed through the Chair. Please be assured that everyone was given the opportunity to speak. However, the Board is most interested in hearing factual information relative to the application, and in view of time constraints placed upon us, we ask your indulgence in not reiterating comments previously presented. You are welcome to stay until the end of the meeting or contact the Land Use Office in the morning. Thank you very much. Okay. First thing on the agenda, seating of alternates. Commissioner Hewling, would you please be our Vice Chairman?
Yes, sir.
All right, Commissioner Briggs, will you please be our secretary this evening?
Yes, sir.
All right, Commissioner Clemens, will you please be on Z-25-44 and Z-25-52, sir?
Yes.
All right, and Commissioner Barnes, will you please be on Z-25-44, sir?
Yes, sir.
And Commissioner Anea, will you please be on Z-25-52, sir?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to review the September 8, 2025 minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the September 8, 2025 minutes, please? Do I have a second? Is there any discussion?
I don't know.
Any discussion? Any discussions?
No.
I have very little. Cassandra, if you were here, they're perfect again, great job. I think they're great. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it's unanimous. Minutes of boards and commissions, does anybody have anything on any of the other boards, commissions, minutes? Anything at all?
I don't.
Nope, okay, moving on. Continued public hearings, none. Public hearings, none. Old business. Old business is 24 Miss Hill Drive, that is application Z-25-44. That's Brian Lindquist, request for variance 3.5, it's an incomplete application. I think we should have, actually, Mr. Secretary. I believe we have some correspondence, sir.
I have. This is the newest today. Yeah, that's it. Yeah. So this is dated October 2, 2025 to the ZBA. Due to Fran Lawley being out this week, and apparently there, apparently there had been a typo in my file, please continue my ZBA hearing to a later date. It makes logical sense because I was not notified, my application was still viewed as incomplete. I never got a confirmation, my application was complete either. So by the time correspondence continued, Fran Lawley was out of the office. I prefer to continue the case till application is considered and fully completed and ready to be heard. Brian Lindquist, 24 Miss Hill Drive, Brookfield.
Thank you very much, Mr. Secretary. Do you want to have a little bit of discussing on this? We can, I can go over what the problems are with the incomplete application or any other thing. Any discussion at all on this application, yes, sir?
Yes. Based on the corrected number, no variance would be needed.
Yeah, you're talking on this backside. Fran, did you, did you get a chance to read that, that corrected?
Yeah, there was the right side.
To the right sideline?
Right sideline, he had the long number in there of 12 feet. If he, if it really is 112 feet, then...
With the right sideline, there's not even a survey to show the structure on the property, so how can...
He hasn't given us a survey, right?
No, there's no survey.
Well, but, but based on what he said, there's no variance required.
That's incorrect.
Okay.
It's an accessory structure in the front yard because it's a corner lot.
He's gonna...
Oh, it's in the front yard, okay, that's, that's all right, that's okay, it's in the front yard, okay.
And also, without having a survey, because we're not allowed on the property, I can't tell if it needs setbacks or not.
Okay.
So that's...
We can't see that one. Does anybody have any other further discussion? I can go over some of the things that are incomplete on the application, if you all wanted to.
It was hard to tell, Mr. President.
Yeah.
These are one of the things that are incomplete on the application, but you want to go through them?
Yeah. Yeah, the application is incomplete, the fees haven't been paid, the neighbors were never notified, and no legal notice has been put out at all. And he dated one of the letters, asked for relief from the fees, a waiver. But that's the purview of the zoning Board of Appeals, I spoke to the town attorney, and he'd have to come in front of us and ask for it and show the reason why he would need that. So that hasn't been done either.
So he didn't, he didn't ask for it, he wanted Fran to do it just based off of the fact that he needed it. It's not that he didn't ask for it, it's like, well, if you know I need it, why do I need to ask for it? Which, I mean, doesn't make sense, so he probably, he needs to request it through the channels that are, are in place for him to do so.
Mr. Vice Chairman?
I agree, just continue it.
Okay, all right. So you're saying you were not allowed on the property?
No, not allowed on the property.
He didn't even leave a phone number to be contacted even for us to review the property, and...
Right, like we have to do, we normally ask and request permission to view the property, and there's no phone numbers. Right, and if you're not allowed on the property, then you can't respond. Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't really exist because...
Yeah, it's still an complaint.
So would you like to make a motion, Mr. Vice Chairman?
Yes, I will make a motion, move to continue this application to the November meeting.
Are there, are there any criteria for continuing or not continuing? I mean, could, could somebody continue indefinitely?
No, I forgot to bring that up, the paperwork...
Before we talk on that, let's, we have to move on his motion, so right now we should be in discussion of his motion.
Yeah, well, let me get a second, then we'll go on discussion. Could I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, now, is there any discussion, and I have some, I should have brought it up before. But the original paperwork came in, correct me if I'm wrong, Fran, was on September 8. So that starts the 65-day period, and the 65-day period ends on November 12. So everybody's got the numbers on that right. So we could continue it to the next meeting.
Yeah, some of them are...
So, so there's a window there?
Yeah, so 65 days clock starts on 9/8. Okay, is there any further discussion?
As long, do we have to require him or send him a notice saying that, you know, after November 12, it's just going to be automatically declined?
He probably, well, he should already know that, but...
It's on the application.
I can have Amy send an email through the portal, so that's how she...
But we can also do that, because we're moving into the November meeting.
Yeah.
So...
We can do that at that meeting?
Yeah, at that meeting, we can dismiss with prejudice.
Okay. Any further discussion? Everybody ready to vote? Okay, all those in favor to continue until, it's the next meeting?
November 8, I think?
November 3.
November, November 8. All those in favor to continue Z-25-44 to the November 3 meeting, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. It's unanimous, let's continue. Okay. Moving on to our next application. All right. New business. We have 5 Stony Hill Farm, Z-25-52. That's, I'll try to say it right, Alberto Rodriguez?
That's correct.
Oh, thank you, sir. Alberto Rodriguez Residence, and that is request for variance. Required dimension of 25 feet, proposed dimension of 5 feet, variance requested is 20 feet, and that's Article 3.5. For the applicant or for the owner of the applicant, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Tell us about your appeal in detail, sir.
Hi, good evening, guys, my name is Alberto Rodriguez.
Welcome to the zoning Board of Appeals, sir.
Thank you, we have 5 Stony Farm Lane, Brookfield. And what I'm proposing today is to reduce the variance by 5 feet because we would like to pretty much do a patio cover where we could use it to pretty much have a little more privacy, one, and number two, it's also to enjoy our minimum backyard to extend the period of time throughout the lot.
Thank you, you're welcome. Anything else, sir?
At the moment, no.
Okay, all right, at this time, I'd like to ask, is there any correspondence, Mr. Secretary? I don't think there's any.
No, I've seen, no correspondence.
None at all.
Okay. This time, I'd like to ask if any commissioners have any questions at all for the applicant, I have a few.
We won't see if anybody wants to speak in favor or...
Any questions?
Could you restate the hardship, it's that you have limited space in the, in the backyard and that it's kind of just the way that it's...
Yeah, correct, so originally the actual, the variance from town is 25 feet. Our house was built back in 88, I believe it was, and upon measuring, it was only 17 feet. So when we fixed the backyard and did the patio, in order for us to actually enjoy the backyard, because we have very limited space. And if we do actually do want to enjoy the backyard, we actually want to build a cover up. But what, if, but with the dimensions that we have right now, it makes the cover about six, six feet closer to the property line.
Mr. Rodriguez, excuse me, would it help if I brought it up on the JAS?
Sure, sure. Yeah, that would be better.
I had a point to make also, Mr. Chairman. Based on the driveway location, it's actually a side yard.
All right.
This is the way this driveway comes up there, but it's, it always goes by facing the road, right, Fran?
This is confusing because I went over this with Laura, too.
Okay, what are your thoughts on it, Fran?
To him, it's a rear yard.
But it's technically a side.
Well, if you look at the front of the house, I mean, if I'm right there. If I was to draw a straight line, that would be the front of the house right there.
Right there, right?
No, yeah, up and down, go up and down, that would be the front, yep. To the left side would be the garage, to the right side would be to the downside, and the rear would be to the rear.
That piece would be correct, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I assume because the, the house is facing this road.
Yeah.
What I thought.
Yeah.
But technically, the way the driveway is located and where it intersects with the road, it's on the curve there, but...
It's on the curve, yeah.
I mean, it's a technical thing.
It is, it is.
Would you like me to point, point to anything on here for you, sir, where I got the mouse?
I didn't know whether that messes up the application or not, that's what I was...
No, no.
Do you want me to point to anything and help, if you need to explain anything? So it's, it's back here, right?
So, yeah, it's actually, yeah, it's back, if you move the mouse just a little more further down, it'll be right around there, yes.
Okay, so it's...
So even though it looks a little further, but it's actually a lot closer than when it looks there.
Yeah, if I drew a square kind of here, right, it's kind of there?
All right.
Okay. Gotcha. So it's right, the patio and the, would be right there.
All right, yeah, that's actually the coverage there, yes.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? And sir, any further? Mr. Vice Chairman?
You, you said that you're looking for a variance of 5 feet.
Correct.
The application is saying your variance you're requesting is 25.
Well, according to the instructions, we...
Yeah, variance is 20.
Yeah.
Because the dimension will be 5.
Exactly, it'll be 5 feet from the property line.
And his, his normal R rating would be higher, but if you look at 3.13.delta.d4.charlie, he is in a conservation subdivision. So the rear, rear yard setback is 25 feet.
Yeah, okay.
Right, Fran?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant, sir?
Well, I'm not clear what the hardship is.
Would you like to explain the hardships again, sir?
Can I, can I read it to you?
Absolutely, and if you need me to point to something, I'll point to something.
I read one's here, but that doesn't strike me as a hardship, yes.
Like the reason we need the cover?
Yes, ma'am, if you'd like to, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Leon Matis Rodriguez, I live at 5 Stony Farm Lane.
Welcome to the zoning Board of Appeals, ma'am.
So our backyard gets sun 24, like all day until like 4, 5 o'clock. So I'll read what's on here first. Due to the placement of the existing house on the lot, the backyard is very limited and located really close to the property line. This creates hardship because there is no reasonable way to place a structure in the rear yard while maintaining the setback regulations. So one, it's the sun, two, it's when it's raining or snowing or anything, there's no real way for us to enjoy that area that we just put a patio on without a cover. So we would like to extend our living a little bit more just by having a cover.
Outside, I'm going to say.
Outside.
Yeah.
And, oh, yeah, and because we're so close to the property line, all the rain was accumulating on our back door. So we wanted to put a cover layer so that it doesn't leak into the basement.
Is that, is that helpful, Mr. Sir?
Well, clarifies, was there no possibility on the side facing away from the road?
No, because there is no exit doors for there. And when that, when that side where the mouse is at, right now, that we have gas tanks for heating and HVAC, so that's what the location for that was.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes, sir.
All right, I just had a couple of questions, please, like. One thing I'd like to do, if you could, I thank you very much for allowing me to go out and look at your property, I really appreciate it. Could you please come forward, I just wrote a couple of things on my little map here, and I just wanted to see if you tell me if they're correct or not. So, and I, this is a rough handwritten drawing, okay? So the house is here, and then the stone patio, which is beautiful by the way, is about 40 feet by 16 feet?
Correct, yes.
Does that look correct? Okay, now, as I look at it, when I looked at it, there was kind of a, right, I guess, I'm guessing right on the property line, it's like a seven-foot wood fence back over to here. Then there's some shrubs and stuff down here. All right, now, this is also a copy of your septic as built. So your septic tank, is this the correct position, is like right there?
Yes.
Okay, and then it comes out, there's a PVC, a D-box, a D-box, a D-box, but there's three fields down there, right? And then this area roughly here, and I can pull up the topography, but on the south, I'll call it the south side of the house, and this is north-south. This is relatively flat, you know, more or less in here, and then it starts sloping off down this way?
Yes, correct, yeah.
Is that correct?
Yes, yeah, it's a big, it's a big slope coming down there.
Okay, so my question, my question is, is this, too. And you can say it's possible, it's not possible. So you have the patio that's existing right here, and I did see the LP tank and stuff like that, which is back over here. There's a Bilco door that comes up, that's, if you remember, I took a measurement. All right, let me measure over and see if I can figure out where the septic tank is. And that was another number I forgot, okay, it was 27 foot 4 inches, that ringed out, did you? That's where I measured over there. All right. Is it possible? And you can tell me yes, no, or maybe. But, and I know you have the beautiful patio here, but is it possible, if you wanted to, okay, put, and you can go back a pretty good distance here before you hit the Bilco doors, the biggest thing there, if you had a little connector, have basically, I'm drawing, kind of drawing in here, here. I'll show you where I drew it in here. But, but make the, make the patio or extend the patio over to the south side, and then you could build the patio cover over it there. I know it's not what you want, but I'm just saying, is it a possibility? So instead of here, I know you got this beautiful here, but if you did here, and then the patio cover here on the south side, because this is all relatively flat. I checked with Mr. Avery, our sanitarian, and the roof just has to be 5 feet away from the septic, which I think you have enough room because the septic tank's way down here. But is it possible, if you wanted to, that you could have it here rather than where it is? And I, I understand you're not going to rip up or take up anything you got there, but to do it there and have the patio cover, so on the south side, basically, is what I'm asking, sir. Is it a possibility?
We never actually spoke about that. I guess everything is a possibility, the only difference is on that section there, there's a lot of stones that needs to be removed. That's the only reason why, plus, there's no doors to go in and out?
No, I know, you, you would have to have a little connector, you know, to loop around from one patio to the other. I, I know that, I realize that.
And we're also thinking in the future of adding a pool in that area so it wouldn't make sense in the future, you would have to rip it down.
I got you.
I do have a quick question.
Yes.
Is this extending all the way over the patio, or is it beyond the patio?
No, it's just...
It's right in the patio.
So the only, the only difference in terms of would be adding the pergola as cover and to the already existing patio?
Correct, correct, yeah.
I have, I have one final question for you guys.
I just want to answer your question.
Yes, sir.
The reason why it's hard to do in that area is because, one, it's too close to the gas tanks that we spoke about, we see, and we don't feel comfortable having gas too close to those tanks.
Yeah, the gas tanks were, I did not measure that distance, but from the edge of the house heading towards the Bilco doors, how far do you think the gas tanks are?
They're way over 20, 23.
Closer, oh, they're about 23 feet? So they're probably somewhere aroundish here, I'm guessing?
They're actually more towards the right side.
A little bit, like right about here?
Yeah.
So you'd have 20 feet whatever to work with and whatever depth you really wanted, if you did want to.
Correct, we won't have to, if that's only close, we won't have to just build it, build it further out. And then it just becomes us further away structure and it's not, and you want to do it.
Okay, I did not see the rocks and stuff we were talking about, it just looked kind of flat over there, it's a beautiful piece of property. It was, it was mostly flat on the south side, and then where I saw it slope off was roughly about here, heading down.
Correct, so if you can see straight ahead, if you move the mouse a little right, you see circles?
Right here? Oh, this, this right here, it's like a little stone wall, right?
Yeah, it's a little stone wall.
I remember that.
All the way across there.
Yeah, is this two parcels or it's one big parcel? Well, it doesn't show it as two parcels, like in your land records, it might split this in half, and so you got one parcel on one side and one on the other. I don't know, it almost looked like two parcels, it was, it was big going over this way.
Yeah, because that, that side over there is so heavy, so we can really actually...
Yeah, the hill, the hill starts like right about here, it starts sloping down this way?
It actually starts sloping right from...
Oh, actually, hold on, I can show the slope.
You can go to lighting, too, Alan.
Contours. Okay, okay, so it's...
It's a big step, it's a steep hill.
Yeah, so it starts kind of around the back of the house, and then it gets steeper and steeper as it goes down.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not really flat there. It's, the only place that's really flat is from that line to the right.
Oh, okay, right here, okay.
So the stone wall, those stones are there, that's the only really piece that's like really, really flat.
Yeah, right here.
Then I'll start sloping down.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I have another question. Would it be feasible to have a retractable cover?
Does that change anything on our...
Retractable?
Yeah.
The pits are retractable and not fixed? It becomes fixed when they use what, sonotubes construction, put posts on it, that's when it becomes fixed.
When it touches the house, I think, like when it, when it touches the house, regardless if it's for a tractor or not, I think when it touches the house, it's still...
So it's the same thing, even if it's like, like a big RV one, right? It's out and then comes back?
Yeah, once it's bolted to the house, it becomes...
A permanent structure.
Yeah, we would need to have to put something special on our zoning regs for retractable ones. Some towns have that, Westport has that.
I think North got one, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, another final question?
Well, just that, would it be feasible to have a retractable cover?
Yeah, but it's the same difference, it's...
For us, it's...
Oh, I understand that, but that's a separate question, I'm just asking if it's a, if it's a feasible option to have a retractable cover.
I'm guessing if it would be the same with the zoning, that we would rather have a permanent?
It'd have to go out 16 feet roughly, right, 16 feet?
I don't think the retractable units are, go out that far. Maybe it's as a structure for, because of weight, wind, you know?
Okay, I have one final question for you, if you don't mind. Could you explain to me how this, you did explain your hardships in the beginning, and if you'd like to clarify anything, please feel free to do it. But could you explain to me how this is not a self-imposed hardship? A self-imposed hardship is something that, basically, you've imposed a hardship on yourself, I don't know about that word, but...
Well, thankfully, we didn't impose it on ourselves because, you know, at the, at the beginning, when we first bought the property, this is all new information that we are receiving as of now.
Right.
So we always wanted to have a cover structure. Even the place where we used to live had a cover structure, so it's something that we were very accustomed to. So when it comes to like two-riddings, snow, you know, bad weather, sunny days, we always like to have a cover area where we could, you know, have the family gatherings and just also because of the kids.
You had a house inspected before you bought it and stuff, right?
Correct, yes.
And the inspector never brought that up?
Never, no.
Like, hey, by the way, you're pretty tight back here?
No.
Okay.
So, yeah, I guess part of the dilemma for making a decision about something like this is that the, given the position of the house and its location, I understand how it constricts you, but given that that's a feature of the property and the house, when you purchase it, if you purchase it with the intention of having a kind of a structure or an awning or whatever we want to call it, that, that would be inconsistent with the zoning regulations for that piece of property as existed at the time you bought it. So can we then construe that as a hardship as opposed to a choice? Is where the sticky point comes in.
Hardships have to be of the land, of the land, it can't be, go ahead.
I think, I think they are arguing that it's of the land, you know, it's the, the position of the house there and the...
Topography.
The topography is really extreme everywhere else.
The setback with the house is based off of the stuff that's on a hill, I mean, we're going to fit a structure anywhere else in the property. I don't think that should be a, I don't think that's considered a self-inflicted, just based off of the way the land was plotted out, but that's the only place I was confused with it.
Yeah. Anything further?
No.
Do you have any further, sir?
Well, I agree with what you're saying, it's not something that we put our own part ourselves, it's just because how the property was previously built and where it's located.
Yeah, you didn't find out until you built the patio and said, hey, I want to have this, and then...
No, and even if you look at the whole property in itself, there's no other spot that would make it work. We would have to do so much more work because the land is on a slope, so we would have to fill in to be able to make it flat.
Yeah, you're talking about on the, the south and southwest side?
On what would be the backyard, I guess?
On the side yard.
Yeah, side yard.
Correct.
South, southwest of the side of the house.
So it's not something that, you know, obviously, it's what we...
This side.
Correct.
Exactly.
And Mr. Chairman, they also, they, they mentioned a proposed activity for this, right, in the application? So I don't think we have to worry about stipulating anything, right?
No, I don't think so.
No?
I don't think so, I, you guys understand, though, that if, if the application does get approved, it's just for a cover. So we can't, if this be, wouldn't be able to take this...
And close it.
For a cover, right, and then close it.
Oh, no, 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 that's not the intent, though.
No, no, I know it's not, I'm just making sure that if, if it gets approved, you guys understand.
Any other questions, comments? Any further?
I'm not on this.
Well, we haven't closed a couple of hearings yet, so... Do you have anything further?
At the moment, no.
Anyone else, ma'am? Okay, all right, at this time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this application?
Does that count, sir?
Does that count, sir?
I know you guys. Hearing none. At this time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to this application. Hearing none. Mr. and Mrs. Rodriguez, you have a final concluding remarks. Anything you'd like to say?
I wanna appreciate everybody's time this evening. Uh, this is definitely a learning curve for us, and um we're definitely looking forward, uh, you know, no matter what your decisions are. Uh, we definitely appreciate the time and effort that everybody in this room has provided us. So we definitely appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. Okay, at this time, is there anything further, in the last minute? Okay, at this time, I'd like to take a motion to close the public hearing on application Z dash twenty-five dash fifty-two, please.
Second.
I need a motion.
So moved.
Let me have a second. All right, is there any discussion? Any, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, I'll explain to you what we're gonna do now. We're gonna go into what's called closed deliberations. We basically speak about your application amongst ourselves, you're welcome to stay here. Um, we'll probably come to a decision this evening. Uh, we just ask you not to chime in or anything while we're, while we're talking.
Okay.
Thank you very much. All right, I'd like to take a motion to approve application Z dash twenty-five dash fifty-two, that's uh Adalberto Rodriguez residence, and that is for a patio cover and five-stony farm lane, and that is required to mention of twenty-five feet. Proposed to mention of five feet, the variance requested would be twenty feet, and that is Article three dot five. I'd like to take the motion to approve this submitted, please.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Who would like to go first?
I'm not concerned with any part of the application.
I do have a discussion, a question, actually.
Yes.
One thing that I'm, uh, it's.
And Commissioner, you're, you're on this, I'm sorry. Yeah, you already knew.
I, I would have loved to get some feedback from the neighbors to see if there was any concern um from their end, especially at four and four, and I think one, where the fence was shared. Um, since there's no objection, we're just gonna say that they moved the door for it, and that's the only comment that I would have.
Mr. and Ms.?
I would second Commissioner Clemens's comments, and um I don't have any concern with the application. I think there are genuine hardships on the property with the, you know, extreme slopes on the, on the front and side, and um.
You don't think that there's the ability to have an ultimate location on the south side?
Maybe on the south side, but if it's sloping down a little bit, and not, not that having gas tanks and HVAC, you know, that can be moved, but I think practically it makes sense to have it on the side that you think is the backyard, but because of the shape of the property, it's just not made like that, you know? So I, I'd be inclined to support.
So what exactly do you see are the hardships, Commissioner?
I think it's slopes.
So topography?
Topography on the south side, and on the east side, it would be that, um, that's technically considered a side yard, even though practically it's a backyard.
I'm not sure if that could, Fran, could that could be considered a hardship? Wanna repeat that?
That, that the side yard is effect, is effectively a, a backyard, like a, like something.
Side yard?
I don't, I don't think that's up to land.
No.
Doesn't have any bearing on the issue, right?
No.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. So just topography?
That's topography, yes.
Topography.
Well, I think you can also say they wanted the, um, the patio cover is also a safety issue because of the rain, and the rain is pooling. They don't want their basement flooding. I'd also argue that.
Unique shape of property.
Yeah, unique shape of the property, and I'd also say the, the idea of a self-imposed hardship, if, if that was our standard, we would probably approve five percent of the applications that came here. Nobody needs a shed, so um.
But I do respect that people don't need a patio cover.
Right, exactly.
Right.
And how is it built, in the eighties?
Yeah.
Uh, we didn't ask that.
No, that was what he said.
I mean, there's enough mistakes replying from the eighties, I don't think this is one that should be considered, um, uh, the developer's rush to put property, houses on land shouldn't be something that would be self-imposed.
And what do you think of the, uh, the rough, the possibility of putting it on the south side?
Um, I just think for.
Rather than in the rear, where it's so tight.
For sake of cohesiveness that.
There's also no door.
Yeah.
You have to walk around to get underneath.
Have to go out the door, yeah.
It would be counterproductive to the purpose of being here, and um even with the, the proximity and to um the HVAC and the gas, I was still like, that would cause more of a, uh, that would be a self-imposed hardship as opposed to just um having it where the man allows him to do it, yeah.
Mr. Secretary.
Well, this is one of these situations where I'm gonna be uncomfortable with where it's decided to think, because I don't really see a hardship.
I'm having trouble with that, Mr. Secretary.
Because um, there's a slight topographical factor, but it's minor, and there's space there on the, on the.
South side.
Side, um, so that doesn't really constitute a hardship. Uh, gas tanks can be moved, they can be buried, that's not a hardship, and so.
They needed access on the south side, put a door in, that can be made.
And, and um, and, and part of the issue, the, I mean, the location of the house isn't really, at least in my definition, hardship of the land exactly. That's, that's, the house is not the land. Um, it's located where it is, and so when you buy a house, you know where it's located. So you have to deal with the consequences of its location. Now, the big, the argument here would be one of ignorance in a sense, meaning not being aware of the zoning regulations at the time of purchase, uh, that, that, that they didn't know, but is that the grounds for a hardship to say, I didn't know something? I mean, generally, it's not, you know, regulations are what they are, and it's the responsibility of the person to know what those regulations are before acting. So, you know, on the one hand, I'm, I'm very sympathetic to what they want, and, and uh, and to, to, to say no would make me uncomfortable. But I'm also uncomfortable agreeing to it because I don't see the conceptual basis in terms of an actual hardship, and so I'm kind of on the.
They purchased the house, they knew the house was tight to the rear, your setback.
It's, it's five feet, very small amount of space.
Small.
It's almost being in the neighbors, so it's not a line of.
It's already occupied with the patio right now, so it wouldn't be much of a change, uh, except for just putting a covered portion of it, because the patio is already extended to that five feet.
Yeah, but it is, it's a, well, that was another one of my concerns, it was, it's a huge variance, okay? You're supposed to have twenty-five feet, the 20 feet of that is a variance, so that's what, eighty-five? Ninety, ninety percent variance. It's a big ask, and, and that, and it stays with the land forever.
And a patio is not um a violation as far as that?
No, the pa, the Fran, we can ask Fran that, the patio's fine, can be there.
Patio's considered landscaping.
Okay, it's landscaping.
It's a different issue.
Yeah, it's a different issue. Yes.
Could you turn on the contour lines, maybe?
Yes, sir. Where's my contour? Oh, right there, contours. So, the, and this is how I looked at it, I, I see this one contour, but then I'm just going for mine, because I'm not a, you know, landscape expert. But it, it was pretty relatively flat, and it didn't start getting really sloping until you were behind the house here, that's where I saw it.
Were the contour lines represent, I forget.
When they get tighter, it's, it's a steep.
What, what's the actual foot, footage between the contour lines?
Um, I can just go tell you what I saw by eye, but so here, on the septic ass though, so if you put this like this, okay, and it's right here. It didn't start getting like really sloping till, because you have the, the septic system is here, right? And I measured over, you had twenty-seven feet four inches from the corner of his house, okay, heading in a southwesterly, this isn't, um. So you hit the tank, cause I, I saw the top of the septic tank there, and then off of that is his fields. So right back here, as you're looking at it, it comes out here, the septic tank is roughly about there, and his fields go one, two, three, like right here. So I didn't really see, I didn't see it getting steep, steep, until, you know, but maybe the back part of his last field on his septic field, or maybe the last two. And then it gets, it gets pretty dang steep back over here, but it was, it was fairly open on the side.
Did you say the septic was twenty-three feet from the house?
No, septic is, his tank is twenty-seven feet four inches. You can't build a, a structure within five feet of it, a permanent structure, that's what I talked to Mr. Avery about.
Quick question, Mr. Chairman. What's, so what's the runoff from the back of the house, was that?
Which part you're talking about?
The, to the left of the, the backyard, to the left of the um, uh, where the patio is, that, is that like a bedroom, is that a bedroom or something, or like a window, like what is that?
Uh, we should have asked that before. I don't know, I don't know.
Because it's still, it's just a continuation of property that's already existing there, if you see what I'm saying, right?
Yeah, that's what you're saying.
It's just going extended to that, so any concerns about the property being that close to others, just already quell by the fact that it's already existing that way?
No, I get you. Well, I, it's roughly about where I had the pointer right there.
Yeah.
Uh, Commissioner, that's roughly about where his tank is. It comes off, and then that comes off about here, and then it goes field, field, and close, field, something like that. But it's, it's right here, if you wanna pass that down, so you can see it. So I, I'd say about that second field is where you, you know, you start hitting the lines there, where, where it starts getting a little steeper.
She's asking about the structure here, is how the patio goes.
I think it's right here.
Yeah.
There's a structure right there.
The house is already, it's already jetted out, it's already coming out.
Yeah.
That, um, that space right there, so if it's already that far setback, this, I was just a mock-up, I'm assuming.
Yeah, did that come out that far? That, that's gotta be close to that sixteen feet, but he's already out. He would have already had to get a variance. Fran, did you see this? We can ask Fran this. All right, this.
So see, this, this is, that this is the property that exists right now, face off.
I didn't know, I don't know if that's the scale, if that comes out that far, that bump out, we could have asked him in the public hearing. I don't remember, you went out and looked at it, right, Fran?
No, not even get out there, no.
I just don't remember that thing being out, whatever, if that's fourteen feet or thirteen feet.
The, the, even on the um.
Looks pretty far.
Yeah, and I think.
Wouldn't they have had to have a variance when they built that, if they were within that twenty-five feet?
In the eighties.
They would have had, oh, well, back in the eighties, I don't know, conservation subdivision, so I'm not sure what, what was done back then.
Yeah, you know what I did, from this corner here, this edge of the house to there, is where the twenty-five feet was, so this is definitely, like, within that twenty-five feet.
Yeah.
They must have somehow got away with that when they built it, I don't know.
Shows it in the.
So, I did take my tape measure, okay, from this right here, cause it's stone, and measure here to roughly where the fence to border was, and that was the twenty-five.
Yeah, so on this, it's.
It's already over.
Yeah, so what is, what's that?
Yeah, but it just looks bigger in the picture than it is, but it's, it's a couple of few feet there.
So they wouldn't have to have, they didn't get that out there for?
Well, I don't know, if it's over three years, it's pre-existing non-conforming.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
It doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter. It's, it's grandfathered. Oh, so, yes, sir.
Maybe um if they didn't extend the trellis or whatever, this roof area, if they didn't extend that beyond the distance of the house, then it could be accepted as pre-existing, not, cause it's not worsening the hardship.
Hmm, I don't know about that.
You're adding to, you're adding to a non-conforming.
Yeah, you're adding to a non-conforming, you can't go like up, out, there's a lot of different things you can't do.
It's just going straight with it, that's not, that would be against a non-conforming?
Yeah, you're, you're adding to it.
Okay.
It's also not, I don't think it's a great, because that picture.
Yeah, that picture is deceiving.
On the survey, the bump out is right there.
Yeah, let me see this, this is actually the scale.
I mean, it just was three.
This is one and forty, right, Fran?
I think it was there, one and forty, right, that's what we looked at.
Yeah, this actually is one and forty, yeah, this is one and forty. So as I look at this guy right here. That bump out is, yeah, it's about three feet. It looks really big on there. It's, it's only about three feet.
Yeah, it even looks big up there.
Yeah, all right, it's, it's not that big.
Okay, okay.
So it'd be an additional thirteen, sixteen feet outside of that.
Yeah, it's that, so that means the house is probably, line measured, that's sixteen feet there, the twenty-five was like right up to where that guy's fence was. So it's probably three feet over in that back corner, and they just, whatever, when he told that, they let it go.
Back in the eighties, yeah.
Okay, back in the eighties. So, I mean, I could go either way on this, I just, I have a real hard time with the hardship, and and I feel for them, and you know, when you purchase a house, you purchase a house, you know the house that you buy. You know, you get conceptions, okay, maybe one day I'll put a pool over here, maybe I'll do this over there, so you kinda know about it. Or at least you know the circumstances to the house that you're buying, and that's what I was talking about in the, the self-imposed one, meaning they know the house, they know, like they mentioned, okay, like maybe on the south side, we wanna add a pool or something like that, so they know, and they kinda have plans for it, so.
When you, when you review this, I mean, same thing for you, that, I, I want you to appreciate the, the insight that you have, right? You guys are intelligent and understand the regulations of Brookfield and of uh the board and what's required. Uh, but when a layperson is going to buy a house, they're only thinking of the possibility of buying the house, and so in Connecticut, you're not required to disclose non-detrimental, uh, or non-structural issues with the house or stuff that's not, that's gonna be costly. So I'm not sure if it's on the forefront when you're purchasing a house to say, those are these, uh, how far is the setback, or how far is required? And even stuff maybe you said, that you have these dreams and these thoughts and these ideas, uh, that you don't have the understanding of what's required, but you have the dreams and the knowledge of what's required, so I understand your quarrels and your problems.
No, I see.
And who you're coming from, um, and I'm just, uh, a bit more sensitive to the layperson understanding the buying house.
Oh, I totally understand, I respect that. It's, and if the ask was like three or four or five feet, and something that we're putting on land forever, um, it would be different, because the guy who lives behind him now probably doesn't have a problem with it, but what about the next person who owns that, and the next person after that that owns that? Um, so we have to think about that later on.
I would agree with that, if it was a full-standing addition, but in this case, it's just a cover. And it's not like somebody can come in, even if they sell a house, and come in and just add on to that cover, put on walls, because.
Yeah, each application is unique.
Right.
Right, and it's a, it's a cover, it's not an addition.
And they would definitely be put on notice, because the requirements would have to go on the D that we uh make, that whatever the students name.
I'd like to hear from, I'd like to hear from you, Secretary, please.
Well, as Doug, she said earlier, it's, it's unfortunate, we don't have any responses from the neighbors, cause that could be somewhat, well, not conclusive, but desperately, at least for me, have some influence. Uh, I guess I wonder, if I'm a neighbor, um, they were concerned about the rain runoff, does this mean the rain will runoff into the neighbor?
Because that was going away from the house, and it's pretty close to his yard.
Yeah, so is that gonna have some impact on the neighbor?
I didn't even think of that.
We don't know what's the neighbors thinking, one or the other, but I guess.
Five feet's a lot shorter than twenty-five.
Yeah.
But, um, I don't know, I'm having, I'm having a tough time on this. Um, could you please go over your hardships again and your thoughts, if there's any?
I, I, I think it's still an issue of topography, because um, maybe there weren't any variances unfollowed when they built the house in the eighties, but it seemed, it seems like practically, that would be the only spot to build that on the land.
Or if, I mean, I didn't go inside the house and look at it, but if they did wanna use the south side and they, whatever, if there's a window, uh, I think there was one on that side. They change a window to a door, and bam bam, you can get up to your patio, I don't, that's not for us to decide how they have access to it. It's, I don't know, it's, I'm, I'm struggling with that.
But again, I go when arguments like that, I say, you know, if that's the case, then why have we ever approved anybody for a shed? You can put a shed in the middle of your yard now, you probably can't get your tools and everything in and out easily, because it's not next to the house. So you have a snow blower, and you have to try and get it through the snow to your driveway. It's not really, it's not really gonna help you.
Yeah, I got you. So, um, topography.
The issue's not the validity of the request, it's just, uh, to what extent does the request conform to what we have to represent in terms of the regulations? So, um, so I'm not, I mean, the validity of the request is not, not in question in my mind, whether it's a shed or, or a cover over a patio, or it's really, you know, like, when the next patient comes along and, you know, what, what are, what are we using as the kind of consistent through line in terms of of, of the standards applied, that's where I'm struggling with this. I mean, I'm not totally decided with that, but just.
I, I mean, I, I think I'm ready. I, the, the various days with the land in perpetuity, and we have to think of the, the people that own the house afterwards, the new people that might be buying this house, so it goes with the land, it's not to the person, it's not to the house. Yes.
I, I think, um, and I, I probably wanna clarify this with everyone, maybe out of my own ignorance, so if it's, if they state that the purpose of this is.
A patio cover?
The patio cover.
It has to be a patio cover.
It has to be.
That's what the, the Mr. Chairman asked.
Yeah.
Yeah, it has to stay, can't be something that you get closed in, right, Fran? They can't close it in and put whatever screening and other materials and basically close it in, put doors on it, whatever.
Yeah.
Cause they technically can't do that.
No.
It's just what we would.
Whatever you approve it for.
What we approve, it would be that.
That, that would be, if the application wasn't specific like that, that would be my only worry about, you know, a future homeowner coming in and extending the house and putting in an accessory, and, you know? But I think because it's so clearly stated, just for this purpose, that's why I'm inclined to support, in, in addition to the, the kind of awkward topography of, of the property.
What tools do we have at our disposal that would be, you know, more decisive one way or the other?
I'm, I'm just, I'm struggling with the hardships and it basically not being self-imposed, meaning you, you purchased a house, you know it, and I understand, you don't think about those things, you don't know the codes, you don't know the regulations and stuff like that, but it's, you had the house, you had, you had the house, you had the land, you have everything, and then you say, I want to do this, oh, now I need a variance on it. Because, I don't know, I'm just, I'm just struggling with that, that's, that's my struggle, which, which is... Got you going back and forth, so...
I, I'm struggling with it too, but I, I hear what others are saying, and I guess if we, if we approach it with the idea that, you know, whether one should or shouldn't know these things before purchase, and Douglas, you're making a good point about that, that if we just accept that they didn't, that's the fact, and they bought the house as is, and then they come to the situation, and then suddenly discover that they can't do this without a, without a variance.
Yeah, that's not a hardship to me, that, to me, I just, I don't see that as, as a hardship of the land. It's a hardship of the people, that's when, that's the, you know what I'm saying?
But I think, I think Elijah's making a good point too, I mean, we always, you can't totally separate the people from the, from the property and the hardships, so there's always that moment of where you, you know, where you come down on that, but I guess I could be persuaded to, to, to say yes to it, but...
As I said, it just makes me a little uncomfortable.
When I get in, thank you, when I get into this situation, I like to think about the, the law on it, okay? Like to go back and think about the law, and they made it difficult for us to give variances, grant relief, for a reason. That's why they made it four votes required versus we just need three, a simple majority. So they, they wanted to make it difficult and tough, and there has to be, hopefully, a group of real hardships of the land. You know, we've, we've been doing this for a long time, there's usually a lot of difficulties, so that's what I'm struggling with, but...
I would argue that's not the case, though. We've had plenty of cases where somebody, again, we'll go back to a shed, somebody wants a shed, they want it point A on their property for whatever reason, and could say yes, we could say no, and, you know, oftentimes, I think we do say yes if we feel like there's a good reason for it, but again, the, the argument of you should've known that your house was this close to the lot line, I understand it, I just, again, I think ninety-five percent of people that come before us, they, I mean, if that's our standard, that you should've known...
No, I got you, and you don't think, yeah, take away the fact that there's not a door on the south side to it, but you don't think that that's, if there was a door on the south side, would you say, you know what, that's a viable option?
I mean, I think it's an option, but again, they have a patio, where they have the patio, they have their backyard area, where they have the backyard area, so I understand why they want it there. I also understand your sentiment that we're only talking about five feet from the lot line.
It's a big request.
It is a big request, I'm okay with it primarily because we're just talking about a patio cover. So even, and somebody had mentioned the neighbors from lot one and two that they have here, you know, I thought about that, and it's not like this is really going to disturb them, in, in my opinion, and I don't know, because like we said, we didn't hear from them, but we're just talking about a cover over a patio. It's not like they're extending the house or building the house more. And we, you know, we had a case, you know, not too long ago, the guy that wanted to, we were talking about making a, connecting the two buildings, because he, he wanted to put the overhang.
Yes.
So it was, I mean, he didn't need that, but we agreed, and we let him, we, you know, accepted the variance for that. It was gonna make it easier for him, and he had something, there was some kind of safety thing, same, similar to, you know, rain run, runoff and snow runoff, things like that, that they were talking about.
I have a question for you, and it's something that Commissioner Prades brought up, was, I, I didn't think about the concern of the water runoff, like I was saying, okay, you know, we built that so that it would run away from the house, not go into the house, and obviously you got an overhang there, and the rains coming and stuff like that, it's gotta catch it and make it go out. Is it possible, okay, because we don't want, we don't know what's gonna happen with runoff and heavy rains and stuff like that, what if we shortened up the variance a little bit and maybe made it five feet less, so that it's, when the water goes off, it's a little bit farther away from possibly messing up the neighbor's yard? Because we don't know anything about the drainage or anything, I mean, it's just a, drainage on a, a hard, it's stone surface, you don't know where it's gonna go, right, and if it's tilted, it's gonna go back away from the house towards the neighbor's house, Fran, right, I'm assuming?
Could, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but if you had a little bit... This is worse, yeah, sure. I, I'll tell you right now, I would feel a lot more comfortable for an approval if it was a little shorter, and I knew that, that water, instead of being five feet away from, maybe it's ten feet away, might be able to dissipate, go a little left, a little right, versus...
Could we, could we stipulate that part of the structure would include a culvert that would deflect rain in a direction...
You mean like a gutter, or something? Will we let it up, Fran? Probably, no?
No, I don't think so.
I mean, you can stipulate almost anything.
Yeah, but then if you add a gutter, then you're gonna be changing the variance request, because you're gonna be adding a gutter.
It's gonna be another eight inches or whatever, I know.
I think on their website, I mean, this is just an image, but...
I'll pull this right back up, go ahead, I'm sorry.
They already have some gutters, I, I don't, there's not like the detail about how they would, you know, irrigate that around the house or where it would go, but I, I, I'm not sure changing the length of the, or the width of the roof.
But we don't know which, we should've asked about the water and the...
The thing about that, see, the fact that the two houses are significantly further away from the...
Yeah, it's over here.
Well, the thing would be on the left there, and then that house, that's about two thirty feet, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't, there was just bushes and stuff, you know, right on the, there was a fence, it was roughly here, heading that way.
I think that would take more damage than anything.
Yeah, and then there was no fence, and then it was just, you know, kind of four, five-foot bushes and stuff like that. It started probably about here, going down to here-ish.
Yeah, I think the, the backyard's of both neighbors, because this is all on top of the hill, both houses are, or all three houses are on top of the hill, so everything's going away from them anyway.
All neighbors were notified too, so if anybody had any concerns...
Yeah, they had a problem, I would've written this, no? Okay, I can, I'm comfortable, comfortable, sir?
Yeah, okay.
Do we have any further? So Commissioner Anya, would you like to re-go over those hardships you saw in that, was...
I think it was...
Topography?
Topography?
Unique shape of property?
Unique shape of property.
And safety, I think the Vice Chairman said?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner, what do you think?
Uh, yeah, topography, reading the structure of the house, and...
Unique shape of the property?
Unique shape of the property, so, unique shape of property, topography and safety.
With the water runoff coming back in the house, okay. You all ready to vote?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, I'm gonna read it out. All those in favor of approving application Z dash twenty-five dash fifty-two, Adalberto Rodriguez Residence, five stony farm lane, and that is for a patio cover. Required dimension is twenty-five feet, proposed dimension is five feet, variance requested is twenty feet, and that's Article three dot five, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Congratulations, sir, that is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you. All right, moving on, table items, there's none. In formal discussion, anybody have any informal discussion? I was gonna have an informal discussion, but now I don't need to.
I think you're good of the order.
What's that?
You're good of the order, informal discussion, part of our informal discussion?
Yeah, yeah.
Pass the bar.
Yeah! Excuse me, Esquire Douglas Clemens, pass the bar.
Pass the bar.
All right. Any other informal discussion? No other formal discussion?
Would you like to make your, your motion, sir? Motion to dismiss.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Any discussion?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Excuse me.